Okay. Phil.
First of all, procedurally, are we just doing things by, we're not voting on anything, we're just doing things by general consensus right now?
Sure, that, that.
I'd make it easier because I don't, I, I don't want to take every motion on this number. We can do stuff like general consensus. And at some point we'll vote on those numbers after we.
We'll vote on the budget.
Yeah, we might, we might give us the figures.
Yeah. Okay. Will go then your list.
Yeah, but generally posted real quick. Throughout this, I am going to suggest that we don't fund some positions in the budget. It doesn't mean that I don't support creating those positions sometime during 2024. It's just that through, I'd like to be able to, for example, drug task force, I'm not supporting putting any money into that, but I am supporting putting funds towards that under a certain condition, but it won't be by taxation. And some of those conditions is using the forfeiture money to fund our contribution towards task force in 24. I'm suggesting that, for example, in the sheriff's department, we don't create any new positions in the budget. But. Yeah, I got. But that we do create one position from other funds. And the sheriff understands that. But what happens is we let him fund vacancies on the new position. And then at that point in 24, he comes back to us, once you've got those filled. And then we can talk about where we're going to find additional money for additional deputies if we think it means so. The same thing is true with dispatcher. I'm suggesting that that we fund one dispatcher. And that Bob understands that when you get your vacancies filled and you fill the new position, those people up and running, trained and whatnot, you're ready, come back to us with, and we'll discuss the second dispatcher and where we're going to fund that from and how we're going to do that. Because the second one will not be in the budget. So as we go through here, you're going to hear some. My suggestion is not that I don't want these positions to exist, it's just I don't want them to be added to the amount we're raising by taxation.
Okay.
So.
DA is not here yet. Well, you want to skip the DA?
No, I don't think I'm going to do any too bad to it, honestly. And I need Monica and Michael, I need, have you seen my suggestions?
Yeah.
How, you, you didn't get it? Yeah, she, I have a copy. Monica, isn't it?
Let me call you today. Hi, can you let DA Granger know that we're back in regular session? Thank you.
Monica, can you tell me in the DA's G accounts? What the account 900 is for? Michael, do you know?
You mean the current year, the $2,000?
No, I'm looking at his, his. A reserve transfer for his machine account.
Yeah.
900.
Yes, in, in 2023, we transferred 2,000. Is that what you're?
From that? I'm not looking at his budget, I'm looking at his G account.
Oh, 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 oh.
Oh, no. What, what I'm also suggesting, gentlemen, is that this is a, we're keeping the investigator's position in the DA's office, but this is a new position. And by the time he gets through the application process, recruitment process and whatnot, this could be well into February before he's ready to hire. And, and I'm suggesting that we put this off until our second meeting, approval on a second meeting in February and reduce that by 9540. For. Somebody's going to get out. Yeah, because anybody won't be hiring. Bob, I'm suggesting you get your investigator, but because of the hiring, it's a new position. You may not get that till into February or whatnot. We're going to fund that as of mid-February. So the first six weeks will be, will be unfunded. We're going to reduce your, that line by $9,500 and the, the corresponding FICA deductions too. We'll give you those numbers later. We're going to give this, this, so. Well, we have to talk about that because you're going to, you're going to do a job to pick them first. It's going to be approved. We've got a process to go through before you get to the end.
So you were asking about.
I can't get.
Yeah, but 3012-50, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That has 12,039.
And what, what is that? What's the title of that?
That is, uh, office and.
Is what, Michael?
DA equipment.
Office and tech equipment.
Okay. And what I'm suggesting, Robert, is that we're going to take 2,500 from your, your G account, your.
Office account.
Office account and add that to, and appropriate that to your 24 budget to offset the expense of some of the equipment you're asking for. So it's just a revenue to cover the expense from your reserve account, your G account. And lastly, in the DA's office, gentlemen, I'm suggesting that the VAC wanted to increase the travel and mileage to cover the investigator's gas, but they added it to the wrong amount. They added it to the $12,000. They could have added it to the $9,000 figure.
Yeah.
I'm just making what I think is just a correction from, from what they did and so reducing that by $4,000.
I'm sorry, I meant to.
By 2,000.
I wish I had this.
Oh, no, 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 it's 4,000.
No, no, it's 2,000.
For travel mileage, is that the one you're writing?
Travel mileage, yeah, by the $2,000.
Yeah.
You following that, Bob?
Well, I'm a visual person, but I'll be looking forward to seeing what you've had written down.
Well, you, you've got a copy of my thing right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So travel and mileage has been reduced from 24 to 10.
07100. Under, under employee expenses.
The fourth line.
Your account number's right there.
Under, under the VAC?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that's being reduced to what?
10-4. The sheet right there talks about what the commissioner's suggestion.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, in other words.
Okay.
Basically, it's, we've just taken a few bucks from your G account, we're going to reduce your investigator's time by six weeks. Going to, with the corresponding FICA deductions and travel and mileage has been reduced by a couple of grand. That's, that gentleman is my suggestion for this attorney's office.
And the reasoning is because you're not, probably not going to hire, hire that person for future.
We're going to kind of make that decision for him because we're not going to fund it until mid-February.
Is that realistic?
I think that's fine. It can just, it'll take us a little while to get.
Sure, it's going to be, it's a new position. We're going to have to create that, all the.
Policies.
Yeah, policies that go with that, so.
I'll probably consult Steve Brown. He may have a lot of those materials.
Okay. Can we move on, gentlemen?
Yeah.
You okay with those?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't, neglected to put a title to these. All you're in your G accounts, Michael and Monica, what is the 900 for the commissioners? Reserve account, G31106. What is that? Isn't that legal services?
Professional services, reserve.
Professional services, right.
I really wish I had this sheet. I would, I would have been more.
I don't know how I neglected that.
So you want the balance in that account?
No, I'm just saying, I didn't name this account, but I think that's professional services, right?
Yes.
Okay, gentlemen, the logic behind this is that we're raising money in the budget for professional fees, attorney fees and so on. And I'm just simply taking some money from a professional reserve account, the G account 301106, and transferring some of that in to cover some of the cost of the leave. Understand?
Yeah.
You okay with it?
Well, I am, if I, do you know the balance?
68,000.
68,000. I'm not taking much out of it.
Okay.
So if that's okay, we'll move on to maintenance. I'm transferring in from the reserve account in the maintenance, what is, what is 70-300? That's, that's not the G account though, that's. Oh, that's in the budget for maintenance. In their own budgetary reserve account. It's 7300. It's the vehicle, yeah, right. I'm reducing that to 1,000. My logic here is that if we can get the maintenance department, the existing civil deputy's vehicle, which is what they'd like to have, buy the sheriff a new civil vehicle, and, and they're only putting placeless 25,000 amounts a year on that vehicle, then he's going to have that vehicle in Rustville before the winter. And even if he has to go back to buying the used vehicle from the sheriff five, six, seven years down the road, we're still talking $8,000 to $10,000. So he doesn't need $2,000 a year for the next six or seven years. So I'm reducing that, to lower that annual from 2,000 a year to 1,000. Understand?
Yeah.
If we're okay with that?
Yeah.
Again, in the FTC, I'm reducing the expenditure budget by one dispatcher and the appropriate deductions. Bob, just understand that we're going to fund one now. And when you get all your vacancies filled and you get the new position filled, you come back and talk to us about need for an additional one. And we'll, we'll look at where we are, what money we have available. So the reason is that if we firmly believe he needs another dispatcher, that we end up getting this from some source, other source other than, than the taxation.
Because we're not likely to fill it anyways because he's got vacancies.
Well, we, we might sometime, hopefully sometime during the year we'll fill it, but if we don't fill it until July 1st, for example, heaven forbid we could do better, but anyways. And if we raise that full amount now and die taxation, well, we will raise six months more than we needed. And if we don't raise any, and we want to fund one for six months, then we're going to have to get into our other sources too.
One of the problems of doing some of that is that we're, we are kicking can down to the next budget. But this is such a steep increase that I don't think we have a choice.
I don't know how we're going to catch up in years to come, but I don't know. I just don't know how we're going to catch up that 19% that we got from the VAC is, is, is not realistic, so. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. I have other adjustments because.
Because of that?
Yeah, right. Of those. Again, on the sheriff's side, the, I'm going to remove the two deputies. We will fund one right now from other sources when and if, when the sheriff is ready to fill that. And then we'll talk about the second one, when these up, up and get running.
Well, so where I'm confused here on the sheriff's is VAC added the drug task force. Right? Added the per, a deputy back in the.
Right.
And, and to me, one of the things that we got to decide now is what are our priorities?
And I'm going to, I'm going to suggest when we get the drug task force that we don't raise money for the drug task force out of the tat, out of the expenditure budget. That we take, first of all, the 47,000, whatever that figure is that we have in, in the forfeiture account, and we apply that to the task force. And then any additional funds that we need, but we're going to do that on the condition that the MDEA, the task force right now in, in Hancock County, whatnot, is supervisor and four agents. And they have two more in Washington County. We're going to tell MDEA, we are going to fund the fourth agent in Elswood, provided that you fund and fill the first three. And that does two things. First of all, if they never fund the fourth one, they're not able to find that. We don't raise funds we don't need. Second of all, it's an incentive for them to raise that third debt of the agent because they get two for the price of one.
Well. Getting a little lost. Where?
Well, let me tell, let me tell you again then. We're not going to raise money out of the budget for the agent.
Okay.
We are going to tell them that we're going to fund one agent. But we have been traditionally been funding two. We're not going to fund two anymore. So that was agent three and four, because agent one and two was Mountain Desert Barabas filling those that states paid for. We're saying, we're saying that we're not going to fund agent number three anymore. But we will fund agent number four if you fund agent number three and fill it. So another.
Okay, not accounting person.
It can be anybody they want, as long as they pay for it.
Like they are in Mountain Desert or.
Sure. It could be the sheriff is going to, if he's going to offer deputies for agent three and four, of which the state will pay for three, we'll pay for four. We're not going to pay for four until the state has budgeted and filled agent number three.
Okay, so I'm following that concept. To me, one of the things that I've been wrestling with is what are our priorities? You know, we can't, obviously with a huge budget like this, we can't do both. And I've been wrestling with, you know, is rural patrol more important than drug task force? And it seems to me like our priorities should be rural, rural patrol. Not the drug task force, not at all. Does that, does the share, and my understanding what, from last time you spoke, Sheriff, you were pulling back people from the drug task force to fill slots here, right? So if we, if, under your scenario, we're funding one person at the drug task force, he still has that, sheriff still has that latitude to be able to do that when he needs to, right? So it doesn't matter where.
That's for the 23 season, for the 23 budget. That's, we're talking about 24 now.
Yeah.
Are we going to fund anything in 24 in support of the drug task force? If so, how much?
And, and.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
Go ahead. So my, my point is, does it really matter whether it's funded in the sheriff's department or whether it's funded in
Yes.
drug task force? Because don't you have the latitude to pull them anyways?
I think I might. It's, it's not that they have it to a specific department so they can identify it and identify what it costs up. And, and on top of that, if the sheriff is going to put a deputy into the task force, we should insist, given the crunch he's in for rural patrol, that he has a replacement for that deputy before he assigns him to the task force. Because.
Which is what the problem has been, filling this open position going on, but that's just what I was going to say is that I'm meeting with Commander Anno, the Northern Commander of MDEA, I'm meeting with him tomorrow. On, and from, not from a conversation with him, but from a conversation with someone else, that apparently MDEA has 11 or 12 open positions right now that are funded. And they're not going to fill them or assign them anywhere until they settle the contract that they're negotiating with the law enforcement side, the state police and those organizations. Because they may need that money to carry them, their budget here, but hence the end of June. So they, you know, if they settle that today, they've got seven, eight months they've got to come up with. So in theory, it's not a bad idea, but in practicality, you know, we couldn't expect to get anything until they settle that contract and know how much of that money that is in this year's budget from EEA maybe needed to fill the gap for next year. So to, to think we could get someone, maybe, but not likely.
And all the reason why I don't want to raise money in taxation for a position that we may never fill. And that's, it's almost like we wasted the taxpayer's money to have, have a money laying there in the task force that not, is not being used. This way, if we use the forfeiture money, which is in the reserve account, as seed money, we can find someone to go with it, depending on when and if agent number four is assigned to the task force. That way, we haven't affected the, the taxation budget. So that's, that, that's, that'll be the task force now.
That explains the task force, your task force.
That explains what I'm suggesting. It doesn't address your issue of should we simply put no money towards the task force at all and take that money, 5,000, whatever's in the reserve account and, and put it towards the sheriff's patrol needs.
That's what my thinking was, but I, I just don't know the, I don't know the intricacies of this task force.
I, I guess I don't really know what the question is.
The, the bottom line is, is that Paul's saying, I'm questioning my own, questioning myself as to whether or not I want to fund, put any money in, in towards the task force. Whether I want to take that contribution, put it towards the sheriff's department's basic patrol needs. That's what he's saying.
That's what my thinking is. In other words, take it out of the drug task force and put it into rural patrol, which is where you're struggling the most.
And see, under my scenario, Paul.
Is that a fair statement?
Well, the demand in, in both departments is off the charts. The demand for rural patrol is overwhelming. The demand for services dealing with drugs in the county is overwhelming. So I guess.
That's why I'm wrestling with priorities.
Yeah, but here's the thing, if, if we had a plan whereby we're going to use forfeiture money for agent number four, and by July 1st, there isn't any hope that agent number four is ever going to get hired. And the sheriff is still looking for patrol deputy number two. We can use that reserve money to fund a portion equal, the deputy for the balance of 24 on deputy number two, the sheriff would like to have. See what I'm saying?
I, I may have some insight after the meeting tomorrow. You know, I'll propose that.
Well, if, yeah, with, with, with the consent of my counterparts, I would like to use to suggest to Anno that, hey, you guys fund three, we'll fund, we'll fund the fourth one and see what his reaction is to that.
That, that has been proposed and it wasn't received well above commitment, but again, I will ask, that meeting is scheduled for 10:00 tomorrow.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned that, that we might be, they might be calling out a lot of two. That, well, if we keep insisting, if we even hint, we might pay for some of this, they're not going to. But if we insist, if we try to tell them that we're not paying for anything, you're going to lose your agents, maybe they'll pull you out of money. So I'm telling you that, that you can tell him what, what this discussion was today, that I'm willing to fund a portion of, of the, fund the fourth agent. Paul's not interested in funding any of it. So I don't ever understand that. This, this decision is yet to be made.
Because, because of my concern for, you know, for rural patrol. Now, it might, I think that my point is almost moot because you have the power to pull them from MDEA anyways.
I have, once they're in the budget, I have the ability to move them when in the most.
Yeah.
I know what you're asking. I do.
He, he does, but, but, yeah, right. But what I'm saying is that, given the present situation, you don't need our consent to move a deputy, assign a deputy from the patrol division to MDEA.
We're not verified first.
But if you knew that we're going to take a very dim view on that, if you don't have somebody to take their place because now you have work to be done with nobody able to do that, then you need to know that.
I would not move anybody out of patrol and send them down to MDEA. Two ways, two reasons I would do that. One, I was fully staffed and I had somebody that actually put back fill that position. Would be the reason that I would do that.
He'd be more inclined to do the opposite.
Yeah, right, and we have it. So knowing that, knowing that, gentlemen, the chances of him having somebody to go into the drug task force, or having two, is highly remote. Having one is sketchy, but so if we, if we don't have to fund the fourth agent, that's not, we just can't find anybody, then that money can go back towards the sheriff.
But that's why your proposal makes more sense than mine.
The, the only thing I need, the assurance is, you know, you know, if, we can all guess on what, if, I need to know when we finish these discussions, how many people I can find in the department tent, this is my patrol, which also includes my contracts, people that I need to hire and backfill the contracts, and what potentially I can have in that drug task force. And I'd like to have a rough idea where that money's going to come from. I'm just curious.
Your first one, under my proposal, your first one can be paid for over CBA. That's.
First one in the department tent.
I'm going to, I'm going to look at the sheriff's department in 24 getting two deputies. One is certain. As soon as you have any existing vacancies filled, people up and running and whatnot, you're ready to hire another one. That money is going to be, my suggestion is to get it right out of CBA and put, and start applying towards the budget. The second one is something we're going to have to talk about. So my, from my point of view, you, you've got a firm commitment to you're going to get one deputy. And you've got a fairly decent chance of getting a second one sometime throughout 24.
So we could theoretically start advertising now for a position that will come online January 1. Is that fair to assume that?
No.
So why not?
Because I do have a candidate.
Okay, bring that to us officially and whatnot, and we would entertain that.
We've got to do our due diligence with our background checks and all that, but this person is currently an experienced deputy with another sheriff's office and won't cost us anything because he's been an employee, you know, more than five years. So look, and I mean, there's a lot of good things there, but I just need to know in my mind and the chief and
You need.
administrative system that I have a new position that I can advertise. I can go up tomorrow and start advertising.
No, not tomorrow. You need one more meeting from us, and that is when we take the official vote, what this budget's going to be. And you need to come to us at that meeting and get our consent to open up applications for that, for any position. Okay? So it's not, it's not tomorrow.
Well, that was just a.
Yeah. If it, if it comes, explain to me, if it's coming out of CBA, why couldn't it be tomorrow?
Because we may not do that. We haven't taken the official vote on what to do then. I'm saying that he.
Oh, I.
Now, wait for the official vote. He knows that we're making a commitment now from CBA to fund that, that position. And then he has to go through that, that simple process of coming to. and then he has to go through that, that simple process of coming to us, asking us to, for approval to vote for applications. Now he's well on his way.
I just mean, it seems like I'm slow, I'll beat the dead horse. We have one.
I'm slower than you.
Put that, put the button, and, and potentially a second, and one potentially at MDEA. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Right. Under what you're proposing.
And my concern goes away, because he has the authority to say, if there's a person at MDEA, he can pull him back if he has to.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that has nothing, you're talking about position, you're people now, I'm talking about.
Funding.
Fun position, how many of those potential three have, through taxation? None, none. No, we're gonna take one of one hundred percent of CBA, we're gonna take, we're gonna fund the fourth agent from portion of half of this, two thirds is gonna be from the forfeiture task reserve account, and then the second one that the sheriff needs, we're gonna have to talk about, see where we are, see what's going on, see what, where we have the monies. I know, I mean, we may have to be creative, but if he puts up a good case, and we agree with it, we'll find the money somewhere, we just.
Well, he, and, and actually, you know, the, the municipalities and the county.
Talking about funding.
Yeah, yeah.
Paul, we're not talking about people, we're not talking about filling positions, we're talking how, how we're gonna fund those, and that's, that's what we're talking about. If we can move on, I'm proposing that we remove that second canine. That's a savings of twenty thousand dollars in twenty-four.
Sheriff, when you, when we added this, uh, second dog, you, you had talked about the, uh, I forgot the word, I think you said working life, or something of a canine, or was six, eight years, is that what you said?
Nastly, I think, they say eight to ten years ago, uh, for one of the types of dogs we have. I think I explained last time, we have two types of dogs.
Yeah.
We have one that's a patrol dog, that's the one I think that this discussion centers around. That dog is trained, you know, article search, searching for people, uh, drugs, and, uh, a patrol dog to protect the deputy, or we use it to search one, send a dog, and that type of thing. The second dog we have, we can, we got that dog who, who came along with, uh, the deputy that we hired at the time, he was a canine officer.
That was the second.
That was the second, and that dog is specifically for drugs, people search, article search, that type of thing. The dog is, uh, you know, one of them is, is a Belgian Malinois, that's the one that's a patrol dog, uh, and the other one is a black lion.
So, in a, when it just, nationally, the type of dog that Travis has and whatnot, the life of that dog nationally is seven to nine years, and Finn will have eight years next year, so he's, he's in that window of opportunity to retire.
Is that accurate?
Uh, figures that I see of what I just said.
No, no, I, I'm not, uh, the dog that, that is supposed to be retired, he's, he's been in service.
Seven years old.
So he's been in service.
Seven years old, he was, uh, he was a year old when we got him to show up.
So he's been in service six years?
We've had him since he was a year old.
He could be eight next year.
Yes, but he's been in service for six years.
It's not, it's not the amount of time that he's been in service, it's his age, his turn, his career. So I'm proposing that, that we eliminate it, and let's save twenty thousand dollars. John?
I, I'm not gonna jump in front of you, while you're thinking, is that okay?
Sure. I, 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 um, I'd like to see the dog stay in service if he's serviceable. If, you know, if there was talk of retiring the dog, you know, if the deputy, who the dog is assigned to is, uh, I don't know what to call it, but I think you know.
Family number, he loves the dog.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, if you were saying, you know, the dog, it's time to retire the dog, or something like that, if that's what was being talked about, then that's a little different for me. Uh, so that, if there was talk of that, then, then I would agree with Mr. Clark, but if there isn't, then, you know, I'm thinking that we should, you know, we should get a couple more years out of him, if, if, if that's possible. I wouldn't be looking to replace him, just because I don't think we can afford it.
Not right now, but, as I said, that, we purchased him with, with a citizen's contribution, and that's what the money that's left.
So, so that's in that reserve account. So that's my feeling.
I'll ask you this, Paul, I just stated earlier, if we couldn't afford both, we can fund the task force, we can fund the dog. And I think you're gonna find that there's a huge outlook for community, whatnot, to fund, help the task force, whatnot. And everybody loves the dogs, everybody, it's, it's great, you know, it's a great asset to the department, but, if we, can we really afford these kinds of accessories to the department at, at a time like this?
Well, I agree with it, but, you know, if we decide at a later date that we want to do it, then the hurdle is bigger than it is now, that, that's my thinking.
If we decide what?
If, right now times are tough, and if we, if we, you know, don't fund this dog, this, to fund it in the future is a much bigger hurdle, it's not the twenty thousand dollars, that's my thinking.
I don't, I don't foresee funding it in the future.
No, I don't either, but it, it's a working asset.
Okay, John, uh, you need to, you need to break this tie, John, keep the dog, all right? So that removes the canine overtime, FICA, where I time it, workers' comp. So, gentlemen, that's gonna add twenty-nine, thirty-four, forty-four, that's gonna add another fifty thousand dollars to the amount of, money we're putting back into the, it was gonna take away from the savings I've been, been suggesting.
Is there, uh, okay, say. Okay, keep going, I'm sorry, just a second.
Okay, so, training, I reduced that because the amount that we had in there and whatnot was, uh, in support of, of three new deputies and a new detective. I reduced that by eight thousand, the equipment was the same way, I reduced that because it's not getting the number of people each, uh, asked for.
So, so just, I think that's an important point out, by keeping the dog in there, we're losing the savings of about forty thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah. But you did the math like you said.
What I added is, I added the, the twenty thousand, the ninety-four hundred, the fourteen-four, and the.
Fifty-one thirty-four.
Fifty-one thirty-four.
Yeah.
Now, does that seem possible? Cause all, all of those extra costs will aid the dog.
No, I'm sorry.
You guys have made a mistake in my sal, unless you guys are cutting my salary, uh, that, you've got this line in there of a savings of fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars for administrative assistant.
Where are you?
The sheriff. Where's mine?
Changed the admin assistant's pay.
Put me down to step C.
No, just leave that at sixty-six.
Okay. All of those numbers have been left.
Oh, so that's related to the, to that?
Some of them are, he changed the admin assistant, he changed regular, and he changed, so it's hard to, it's hard to do that math.
You can't see the forty-nine is related, forty-nine is related to all three of those positions.
Not to the dog, okay, now I can.
Except that.
Okay, uh, so the training and equipment is okay, guys?
I was just gonna say, equipment, I thought we had some sort of a agreement that some of the major purchases that we're going to need for equipment, that we would put the list together and bring it back to the commissioners to consider spending our funds on, I just want to make sure that I'm clear with that as well.
That's been a tradition just yet. I just, and that was a, and that was a, in this budget, we did that, we looked at every line that we could pay for on a backup, we took it out of the budget, so.
Just, just want to make sure that, as you said, clearly.
Can I just say something about the training? Um, you promoted a couple new sergeants lately, and by understanding this budget, there's gonna be one more sergeant coming. Um, they haven't been trained, so, training nowadays, what everybody's going to, the FBI leaders, of course, the seven ninety-five a corps, and there are three corps that they should go to. I'm saying, in this first year, we probably wouldn't send them all for real, if we had the money, realistically, maybe two, but that alone is over six thousand dollars. I, we can't promote these people, not training, that's all I can say about training.
Okay, so. That was never figured, figured in your original budget, because, uh, every deputy that went away to the academy was, uh, was twenty-five hundred dollars in training, so that's seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, for three new deputies that had to go to the academy, so.
And I wasn't here then either, I'm just, I'm bringing that up just something that, I mean, I wasn't hearing what you were done, I'm just saying that, that's what I.
Yeah, I, I think we have to prioritize the budget.
But, but that twelve thousand dollars covers that, those numbers that you're talking.
Well, that, that takes half that out, yeah.
In other words, instead of twenty thousand, you've still got twelve thousand in your budget.
You still send possibly two people to the academy, so they don't train.
Well, maybe, maybe not, if you're sure.
Right. Correct.
Well, so, but at least one. And if we, and if we have to buy somebody, we have a reserve account to pay for the academy training for buying, so.
So just put that in perspective, uh, refresh my memory on the prices like that, I mean.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Three thousand.
Three thousand is the tuition, only more than that, and then above that, a hundred years ago, when I went to the academy, they supplied the uniforms, you know, the teach fee bids, and all of that kind of stuff.
But that doesn't come out of the training budget, right, just the tuition does?
What comes out of equipment.
Okay. But out of the training budget would be the tuition.
Correct.
And the training, that's the chief thought about.
Chief thought, correct.
Does twelve thou, twelve thousand cover that, I think it does.
Like everything else, the cost is astronomical, I mean, I just had to have my work truck out, because the transmission was acting up, and they, um, had to change the fluid, and they kept, what the problem was, but we factored the bill, and it was over six hundred bucks, so there's no such thing as hundred dollar fixing, so.
Well, I guess the question is, twelve thousand covers?
I'm saying, hope it does, that's my proposal, you wanna go with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause I think we've proven it covers, so, yes.
All right, so let's go down to the, uh, civil department, uh, as we've been informed, Paul is retiring, and so in twenty-four, that position is gonna drop back to something less than Paul's, and I'm, I'm taking an estimate, it's gonna save us, you know, eighteen thousand dollars in the FICA, and workers' comp retirement associated with that, is, uh.
Sheriff. That, that's good in theory, but we have to advertise that in-house, if somebody with twenty years' experience in patrol decides they want to do that, that saves us a big, but just, no, of course, it reaches it.
Well, and that would mean there's a vacancy somewhere else, but.
To backfill.
Yeah.
You're right, but that would be, you know, we've already gone through department tent and funding, that was, that'd be funded there, but I just bring that to your attention, that.
That's a possibility.
That, that's a possibility, correct.
The, uh, ACO, uh, has a reserve account, and, uh, we have set aside ten thousand dollars by the VAC, um. Figures don't make sense, do they?
No.
I think, I think that twenty-five thousand was supposed to be twenty-five hundred, I think it's up this way.
So, what you're talking about is this, that reserve account for that vehicle.
That should be twenty-five hundred, that's twenty.
Instead of ten thousand.
It should be twenty-five hundred, but we're gonna propose for seventy-three hundred.
And then, yeah, and if we did it every, we could buy one of the sheriff's vehicles to do it again, that, uh.
Well, I just want to ask how, you, you have a projection on how many miles that realistically that ACO is gonna put on in the course of the year? You really don't have any estimates of this one, because it hasn't been online at all, correct?
It's not online yet, Crystal gave it to us, it's a piece of crap, we spent ten thousand dollars on it already.
We just have Google.
Oh, you got time?
We, and anyways.
Uh, I'm just saying that, you know, if, if we need a vehicle in two, three more years for the ACO officer or whatnot, and we still have rapid funds, we buy the sheriff a new vehicle, we give that one to the ACO officer, so he's really not gonna need money for, to see if he fits up. Okay, and we talked about drug task force. I was hoping, and found out it's not possible, that we could pay for the Agent Number Four, for the drug task force, I mean, the drug settlement money, I guess that's not possible. It's kinda irritating, that's three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, you can't find any way to spend it, we need desperately funds for investigation, we can't use it. So, that was a comment.
I didn't hear where you said that from, hold on.
It's not, they were talking about that.
Well, hoping to find it. Yeah, good luck trying to find something to use that for.
Well, that's what we're wrestling with.
That's what I'm wrestling with, but that's, that comment is, is irrelevant, can't be done. So I'm not sure how that affects, we're still only going to provide funding for one agent. I don't know how that, how that affects that, so.
Well, you said that was gonna come out of. We've already cashed that over.
Yeah, no, but, you know, but I think, uh, I had to, she, I was going to use the, 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 the forfeiture money to fund half of the sheriff's deputy, but now that we can't use supplement money to fund the agent, I've got to use the, the reserve money, or the forfeiture money for the agent, and we'll have to take a hundred percent of the sheriff's deputy out of CBA. So these, that's what, that's what, there's been a change in my suggestion, since I wrote this up, because I found we can't, task force.
Well, okay, so, we've talked about CBA, we can use CBA to, to, uh, do what we want.
Oh, you can use CBA money to, to give John a trip to the USP.
Yeah, so, but, so my point is, why not leave this in the budget and write, the fact right now is CBA? I'm just afraid it's setting us up.
Well, be, well, because, you're raising money in taxation, whatnot, you may never spend. That's why, in other words, the, the amount we raised by CBA directly related to the expenditure, we don't spend it, okay?
Oh.
Right? Tim, and I've got to leave, I'm sorry.
I would just ask one more thing, that, you'll light a fire on Maine County Commissioners Association, start lobbying, then, to get some rural funding, so that we can get some help from the state. That, that would be a big help. NSA is gonna stand again, as we've already started lobbying, uh, representatives and senators, but get some of that support, but we need to get the Maine County Commissioners, who are responsible for the budgets, that's why we're sitting here today, uh, to light a fire on them, or someone, someone take the lead, someone's gotta take the lead for that, for that group, uh, and get them to realize how serious the shortages of, of deputies is, and the difficult time it is to fund them, without throwing it on the taxpayer's back, we've had two, two, what I think were very good proposals, that went forward, and the feedback from the governor's office was that she wasn't gonna support it, and one was, they were gonna have some of the fees that was gonna come through Prove, that could be dedicated for that, and the other one was for the small tax, to put on, let me say. And all of those were thrown, both those ideas could build really before they even got to the governor's desk. So, to me, um. So to me, um, a small tax added to the sales, like a, I mean, think of the amount of money that we generate over over the course of a year statewide. And that would hit him, and my question, and I always suppose that if you're going home on Friday night and you want to get a six-pack of beer, are you going to complain if that's seven dollar ninety-nine cent six-pack of beer went away, they're big, probably, you know, they probably still don't buy the six-pack of beer, so I would encourage you to come on and get actively, you can count the commissions and get rally up some support, even if that's.
Do we, do we have enough direction?
Bill, I I would just, Bill, do you want to keep the drug task force numbers as you kept them for the agent? Or is that going to?
The only expenditure in there should be
One of the.
Right, should be the supervisors' pay and benefits, that's the only expenditure that should be in the drug task force.
That's okay.
Uh, I got to go, but one thing on the commissioner's comments, I would ask that we schedule, if not the next meeting, or when we schedule another session on reviewing the policy on retire, return of work. Like a workshop?
Like a workshop.
It doesn't have to be, I mean, I'm going to have three, four suggestions on how we, some changes to that, some clarifications, questions, so I think we can do it at a regular meeting, maybe on the off meeting instead of.
Well, at at the end of the meeting, but schedule it as a workshop, I think.
Whatever, would it be, I'd just like to have it back on the agenda.
Okay, Michael, do you have any comments?
Uh, no.
Anything else? Okay, you're okay, John?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have one item left.
Gentlemen?
Yep.
I'm going to move it with you, gentlemen. Second.
Move the second, and all in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay.